We're pleased to call to order the regular meeting of the West Valley City Council. And let the minutes show that all members of the council are present this evening. And this week, we have an opening ceremony led by Don Christensen, Councilman.
Thank you. For you scouts that are here, you're probably here working on either a communications or a citizenship merit badge. That's where I started my history desires, was back in the scouts when I worked on those citizenship merit badges also. Last week, I was privileged to attend a conference that was held in Boston. And you might not recognize Boston, but there are a couple of places there that you may recognize from your history lessons, Paul Revere's home, the North Church, Boston Harbor, where the British were bringing in tea that somehow got dumped over the side of the ships instead of paid tax on. Few other little historical events happened there culminating in a revolution and a Declaration of Independence. Tonight, we have the ability and the privilege of pledging allegiance to that flag that is the result of that revolution and Declaration of Independence. So would you all please join me? And scouts, don't worry about saluting, you may, in joining the pledged allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember. We have, as mentioned, some scouts with us today. Are you all part of one troop? What a good-looking troop it is. Do you have a senior patrol leader that can come to the microphone and introduce your group? Again, tell us your name and your troop number, what school you live by, and what badge you're working on tonight.
We're troop 1404. I'm Enid Knopfinger. We all go to Madison. That's Levi Selman, Trevin Tucker, Connor Cassidy, Matthew Hansen, Benjamin Fisher, and our scout leaders, Ben Knopfinger and Randy Jensen.
Great. You're welcome. We're thrilled to have you. Good to see you.
Thank you.
We have item five tonight is the minutes to be approved, November 20th. Councilmembers, what's your preference there?
Move for approval of minutes of November 20th?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
The minutes are approved. Every once in a while, in the great puzzle of the city, there is a piece of the puzzle that's so essential, we give that person the Essential Peace Award. And our mayor pro tem Cory Rushton, an at-large city council member, will read that on our behalf this evening.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. This honor fell to me, and I'm grateful for the opportunity because I know each member of this city council has a story and a close admiration of the recipient, Ms. Margaret Peterson. And I guess I have the honor because I sit in the chair that she once held for a number of years here in West Valley City, as well as many other shared interests we have with her. But I'd like to read the nomination for the Essential Peace Award and then proceed from there. But in summary, the Community Education Partnership of West Valley City, which is a nonprofit corporation, was launched in 2002 when then-West Valley City Councilwoman Margaret Peterson, together with concerned citizens, community leaders, and educators, determined that an organization was needed with the sole purpose of improving the lives of West Valley City children by providing them with meaningful, fun, and educational after-school programs. To such a size that Margaret left the city council to devote all of her professional time and energy to managing this organization. The Community Education Partnership sponsored programs that have operated in 23 locations throughout West Valley City and have served thousands of students. Community Education Partnership is unique because it is a collaboration among community partners and sponsors. Community Education Partnership administers and oversees programs, but it does not directly provide services. Through planning and with partners to deliver services, thousands of dollars are saved, which go directly to educating children and youth. What all that means is that Margaret Peterson has, from the ground up, built an organization of business, educational, and community leaders who govern the Community Education Partnership. As executive director, Margaret writes grants, administers funds, trains in-school coordinators, runs the background checks on employees, recruits and maintains sponsors and partnerships, and does everything needed to run what has become a large and necessary organization in West Valley City. Regular participation in after-school programs is linked with gains in academic performance, positive work habits, and reductions in behavioral programs, dropout rates, drug abuse, and gang involvement. Those who have worked with and supported the Community Education Partnership over the years knows that its success is intrinsically linked to Margaret Peterson's desire to serve her community. We cannot imagine the Community Education Partnership without Margaret's active influence and management. For these reasons, on behalf of the thousands of children, Margaret Peterson and the Community Education Partnership of West Valley City have helped over the last decade. Please accept, as mayor and city council, small token of appreciation for your many years of loving service to the city. You are an essential piece.
Hey, shake our hands, Margaret.
Thank you very much. I don't think I'll ever down this end.
Yeah, you're normally on this side.
Oh, thank you.
Just the nice little nomination right up on the back.
It's really nice.
Yep. Trevon, this is for Kevin. You know how he is.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Margaret.
Oh, what's that? Oh, I... Thank Kevin. Glad you're still here.
Let me see your nice plaque.
Trying to shake Sherry's hand.
There you go.
Want everybody? Thank you, Sherry. Can I say thank you?
Yes, we'd love to hear whatever thoughts you have, and we'd love to share with us. We don't do this too often, so we'd love to hear anything that you'd like to leave with us on this.
Maybe introducing some of the special guests who came with you.
I will. Thank you very much. I have never heard of this award. When I was on the council, we didn't do this, so it must be new, certainly an honor.
About once every 30 years, we get one out.
Every 30 years? Wow. I'd like to introduce several of our board members who are here. Brad Simmons, request star. He's on our executive committee. Candy Michaels, CM Accounting, is our secretary treasurer. Lana Harvey, our Granite District representative. Michael Anglin represents UPS. Bob Marshall, no, Bob Fitzgerald, not Marshall, same thing, here in West Valley City, representative. And Donna Harris, principal of Frost Elementary, is on our board. We have, of course, Steve Beeler, excuse me, is our board chair, and we appreciate all of these board members. Steve takes the over after Carolyn Byrd was our chair, and we certainly miss her. I would like to thank, in addition to our board, our donors and financial contributors, Citi, Wayne Pyle, and Paul Isaac, and of course, Mayor Winder and all the city council members. We couldn't do this without your support. That's the meaning of a community partnership, is having the city's involvement, the city's caring, the city's support. You know, Wayne and I still hug each other as friends whenever, and Paul. I've been involved with the city for 20, 25 years as city council and planning commission, and I just continue doing all this forever, and I really have some good friends. And Sherry was the first person I met when I went to Old City Hall on Redwood Road, and she's been here... You're not as old as dirt, but that's pretty good. Sherry is probably the number-one employee here, one of the first employees ever in this city. Not quite. Back in those days, I was appointed to the planning commission, I was carried up the stairs. I was in a wheelchair at that time. So things have definitely changed. I'd like to also thank our financial contributors, in addition to the city gives us an annual contribution. We receive grant funds from the Utah Office of Education, Utah Department of Workforce Services, and those are all federal funds. We have corporate founders, foundations, and corporations that contribute, Rocky Mountain Power Foundation, Kennicott Charitable Foundation, Doctoral Foundation are among the recent ones, and several numerous corporate and private donations that want to remain anonymous. And as we started this organization 10 years ago, it started as a committee of concerned people, and now we're a nonprofit corporation with annual expenditures of almost a million dollars a year. So it's been an exciting process, and the doors keep flying open, which indicates the need that we have in our city. Now, kids are our future, and we have found that quality after-school programs do make a difference. We don't do a daycare babysitting program. Every program has at least one hour of tutoring and homework help, and our latest teacher survey showed that 57% of kids' homework increased, the quality of their homework increased. 54% more kids got their homework done. Academics, grades, test scores increased 62%. Positive behavior increased 47%. And that's a survey of 1,700 after-school kids by the teachers of their regular day school. So this is making a difference. It's well worth all of our energy and our time, and I tell you, our board knows how much time and energy I put into it. Thank you very much. This is a great honor. I sincerely appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, we all talk and dream about how to make a difference in this old world and change some lives, and Margaret Peterson's someone who does it, and has been doing it for years and continues to do it. Margaret, we appreciate your long service to our community, and you're one of those wonderful human beings that shows that you don't need a title to do good things. You're out there doing good things in the community regardless of what title you have or what hat you wear, and many lives have been made better because of it. And board members, we appreciate your service and time. It's often thankless, unpaid sort of position, but we look at the data, and we hear anecdotally from students and teachers and principals and parents that you really are changing lives. And it warms my heart, there's people who aren't giving up on our kids, but who are determined to take an active role and to make their future brighter, and you're going to see some college graduates and some brighter futures because of the seeds that are planted in those after-school programs. So thank you all very much, and thank you again, Margaret, for being that wonderful essential piece in that program and in our city. So thanks again. Now, because we think so much of you all, we will not be offended should you choose to get on with your evening, and if you want to stay like the scouts have to, you're welcome to, but up to you. Thank you again. We come to item seven this evening, which is our comment period, and we have not had anyone that I'm aware of that signed up to speak this evening, is that right? This first lady? Okay. So that keeps it short and sweet. So we come to item eight tonight, which is our resolutions. And we do have one resolution to consider, 12-158. Mr. Pyle, if you could introduce that one, please.
Thank you, sir. We have a construction project over at 3100 South and 1400 West wherein we're improving our roundabout there, right next to the cultural center. There's a change order that we're requesting approval for in that project and the additional amount of $16,975 of Class C road funds.
Thank you. Council, any discussion there? Or motion?
I would move to approve Resolution 12-158. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes. I wanted to jump back to the comment period briefly. We didn't have anyone in the public sign up for the comment period, but I neglected to see if our city manager or council members had any comments tonight on any topic for our conference.
I'm good, thanks, Mayor.
Okay, council?
Is there any of the public that do want to comment even though they didn't sign up?
I did see Mr. James come in. Did you have purpose to come?
I was just checking on you, see if you guys were still in business.
Well, we are, and our hearts are warmed to see you, and we appreciate your years as an active member.
No, my friend here, famous member of France upstairs, on some other projects that we're involved in, and to Cory's, I'm behind him, we're up to France.
Good.
Two things we're doing, maybe in the value of...
Well, we appreciate you checking on your... We appreciate our bosses checking in on us from time to time, so thanks for stopping. We had someone last week tell us we're better than a reality show, and I know that's not true, but thanks for coming anyway.
Thank you. Nice to meet y'all.
Yeah, great to have you. Okay, so item eight, we just did. Item nine, we have an item of unfinished business tonight, and Mr. Pyle, if you could please introduce that one.
Thank you, sir. We have a general plan ordinance change, and this involves a project over at 2600 South Anna Carolyn Drive. Mr. Tim Sof, who's here with us tonight, and representatives of ASWN and JSA Architecture, are requesting this change for the purpose of modifying a previously approved project that was there at that location. I can't even remember now, it's two or three years ago, three years ago? Yeah. So anyway, the project, both in terms of the general plan change and the next item which you're going to see, which is a modification to the development agreement that was associated with the project, have been brought in for consideration and have been reviewed by staff, planning commission, and is before eat tonight for consideration.
Okay, thank you. It's good to see that group again, and we have had some back and forth on this project, and I think it's better because of it. So on ordinance 12-41, councilmembers, any comments or questions? As Mr. Pyle mentioned, we do have the applicants with us if there's anything we need to ask of them.
Mayor make a comment and then a motion, I guess. We're ready for that. This is an exciting meeting, an exciting discussion for this. This is a little bit of a leap of faith on the city's part to come back with something that on the western edge of our city. But I've been very pleased with the applicant and their presentation that was made to this council a little over a month ago, and them making good use of the feedback and the time of that meeting to get together with the staff and hammer out a real concrete development agreement. And so, you know, I guess we'll talk about the development agreement in the next one, but in relation to the general plan, I think that it's come together nicely, and would move approval of amending the general plan with the ordinance attached to that, which is number 12-41.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you both. Any discussion to that motion?
I'd like to make a comment. I agree with Cory. I think that this developer has worked really hard to make adjustments and changes to the desire of the council. With that being said, though, I still believe that these densities are way too high, and I struggle with the densities that are being proposed. Also, along that same line, we've talked about apartment living being a lifestyle choice, and I believe that there is a place for that type of apartment complex, but I don't believe that this reaches that status. I don't believe it meets the needs of all demographics and all ages that could choose to live there. And so those are a couple of my concerns.
Okay, thank you. Other comments or questions, councilmember?
My concern is also the density. I was on planning commission when it first came to us in like '06, and the density was at a much lower rate. And even then, it was knowing that the Mountain View Corridor was going through. So the whole time this project has been in the tube, it has always known the Mountain View Corridor is going to be there. So we've always had that in our back of our minds, that it's a hard use, but I still think these densities are just way too high for the area, and the infrastructure we have there as far as the roads to support the number of cars and density that's going to be there. The other, I don't know, there's just, I just think it's too high. I think we're selling ourselves short by settling for this. Planning commission recommended, I mean denied it, and they're there for a reason, and I think they gave us a good recommendation on them tonight.
Okay, other comments or questions? Okay, I'll make a comment. I think that often we look at density, and we worry that higher density is worse for the city, and I don't think in all cases that's necessarily true. I think here, as you talk about unique piece of property sandwiched between the loading docks of Winco and the future Mountain View Corridor, it's going to be a tough sell to have single-family homes and even duplexes may not be the optimal, and I think to have the Class A apartment buildings as proposed is the highest of best use. As I've talked with different retailers along that corridor, they're excited to have additional rooftops. When you look at those cars, they won't be driving through any neighborhoods, but they'll be right onto 5600 West. The traffic study that we saw showed that not only does it work, but as the Mountain View Corridor opens up, that reduces 56, and with that bridge that the applicant's willing to pay for will help even direct traffic further to the north eventually. I share the opinion of some of my colleagues with regards to the willingness of the applicant to compromise and bring back solution when we didn't have enough open space in the original proposal to not only bring that open space number up high enough, but even to donate $96,000, I believe it is, Wayne, is that right? Free and clear to the city to use for additional trail expansion. Being right on the Ritter Canal Trail, they've included a trailhead there, so those that live on the western part of the city will be able to enjoy that amenity beyond just the people in that development. So I realize it's a big ask they're making on when you look at just raising density, but I think what they've mitigated as far as equality development, as far as giving attention to the open space, and even generously paying for that bridge to go north eventually to the traffic satisfies any concerns I have, and to me, it's a net positive when you look at the retail situation there to have those rooftops there. So I encourage support of it. If there are any other, are there any other discussion items here? Let's do a roll call vote on this one tonight. Ms. McIndry, 1241.
Mr. Vincent?
No.
Mrs. Lane?
No.
Mr. Beeler?
Aye.
Mr. Q?
Aye.
Mr. Rushton?
Aye.
Mr. Christensen?
Yes.
Mayor Winder?
Aye. The ayes have it by majority, and so now we'll come to Resolution 12-159. Mr. Pyle, if you could introduce this one, please.
Thank you, sir. This is amendment to the development agreement that I referred to earlier that affects the same project. The amendment really basically is a restatement of the project from the townhome project that was previously approved to how the apartment project would then be outlined.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion to this? I know some of our discussion, 1241 bleeds into this a little bit. Or motion?
I would move for approval of Resolution number 12-159. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion there?
I'll just make another comment, although I was not in favor of the project. I am, now that the project has been approved, I'm in favor of making sure that it's done correctly, so I'm in favor of this resolution.
Okay, thank you, sir. Any other comments? Okay, let's call the vote, and again, let's do a roll call vote. Ms. McIndry?
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
Mr. Beeler?
Aye.
Mr. Q?
Yes.
Rushton?
Aye.
Mr. Christensen?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor Winder, sorry.
Aye. And that one passes unanimously. This is a good little lesson for the scouts on how we look at an ordinance sometimes of changing a zone, and we have some disagreements sometimes on a zone change. So the next item was the development agreement, saying, okay, now the zone has changed, as we get into the specifics of that development, and we're requiring a certain level of quality. How do we feel about it? And so it's perfectly logical for somebody to be against the zone change, but when it comes to the development agreement, be satisfied that our staff and the applicant have hammered out a very good quality development. So if somebody are wondering why the difference is there. Now, we come to item 10 this evening, which is a motion for executive session. Mr. Pyle, any need that you see?
No, sir.
This evening? Anyone else on the council? Okay, then we come to item 11, which is to adjourn.
I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the redevelopment agency. Note that an opening ceremony has been held and that all members of the agency are present. First item of business is the approval of minutes for November 6th and November 13th.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the minutes of November 16th and November 13th. Regular meeting and special regular meeting.
Second.
And we'll just do the 6th, not the 16th.
Oh, 6th? I said 6th.
Got to keep that screen clean, Dave.
Oh, I'll move for approval of the minutes of the 6th.
Okay, it's been moved to the 2nd. Any discussion? All in favor of approving the minutes of November 6th and November 13th?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Communications, any communications?
No, sir, thank you.
Any report from the chief executive officer?
No.
Okay, we have three resolutions to consider tonight. Mr. Pyle, would you like to introduce Resolution 12-19?
Thank you, sir. As discussed in previous meetings, and for the benefit of the Decker Lake Drive area business sector over there, we're proposing authorization of a draft project area plan for what we will call the Entertainment District Community Development Area. This community development area will allow us to facilitate development and redevelopment over in that area using property tax increment along the same sorts of lines as a normal RDA, but without some of the other tools that are normally associated with an RDA, like condemnation power, for example.
Thank you. Any discussion or motion?
Mr. Chair, I think it's a signed project and a great step forward, and I would move for approval.
I'd second.
Thank you. Hate to have things die if you like with a second.
No, I have another thought on my mind, if I could just make a comment.
Okay, go open it up for discussion, then.
Request, I only think of one thing at a time, but as somebody that represents the vast majority of West Valley City on another board that eventually will have to approve or disapprove of the CDA, we just welcome any further coaching or information to help go through some of the different entities that it will have to pass as we go forward, so put our best foot forward on it.
Thank you.
Just make a comment that in this, this is, in my estimation, this is a key tool in helping the redevelopment of the Health Center Theater, and a part of that important plan for the city to help them to remain here in the city and grow here.
Any other discussion?
The other thing I wanted to say is that this is, I think this is an important tool, and it's good that we're pulling it out and how appropriate it is, and to kind of piggyback on what was just said, is this is an area of our city that a lot of people that live in the surrounding cities and region is the only part of our city that they know, and it'll be a good showcase and a good improvement to continue promoting the city and its assets and the economic development future of West Valley City.
I would add, that's true. I spoke with a gentleman this afternoon who happens to be on the Health Center Theater Board, and he says, he said, honestly, Mayor, that's my only exposure to your city is when I come to Health Center Theater, and I find a restaurant nearby to eat at, and that's the only, he lives downtown, he says, that's the only time I ever come to your city or have cause to, and that is a gem in your city, and that's a great area, so.
I'd also add that with the opportunity to perhaps bring the Olympics to Selig City again and use the Maverick Center again, we may be exposing a lot more people to what we are able to help encourage and develop in that area prior to that time. And a lot of the world will only have exposure to this district.
Any more comments? Thank you. We'll call for a vote, all in favor of the motion to authorize Resolution 12-19.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It's unanimous vote. We'll move on to Resolution 12-20. Mr. Pyle?
Thank you, sir. The resolution before you would... The resolution before you would authorize the approval of an incentive agreement for an RDA project that we are bringing or proposing to bring to the city. Thermo King is a thermal and refrigeration maintenance, repair and outfitting company, I'm kind of ad-libbing there for a second, that works with the trucking company industry and would be located out in our Warner Truck Center. We are recommending that we provide a hundred and fifty thousand dollar incentive across two years that would help them relocate and be able to move to our city. The return on investment analysis that we always do with these projects shows that we would receive a return in three ways from this project bringing this to the city. One of those would be in fifty-five new jobs being here in the city. Another would be that on an annual basis, two others on an annual basis, we would be bringing an estimated twenty-nine thousand dollars annually in property tax to the city and seventy-five thousand dollars annually in sales tax to the city for a total of just over a hundred thousand dollars, which then, of course, would continue on into the future. So we recommend authorizing the agreement.
Thank you.
Just a comment on that. Didn't we say in our report, we heard in our study, meaning that the return on investment comes back in a year and a half, estimated?
Yes, that's right. So in the first year, if I remember right, we're providing around a hundred thousand, is that right? And then the second year, fifty thousand for the total of a hundred and fifty, but yeah.
And every year thereafter, the city's better off than had we done nothing tonight.
That's correct.
Is there a motion?
I better couple that with a motion. Move for approval.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved to second. Any further discussion?
I'd like to, I guess, weigh in on this a little bit. It was, it gives me a little bit of heartburn. It was about two years ago to the date, we had a deal that was very similar, and the city came back, and it was, the incentive was along the same things with moving costs. And I said from this dais that moving costs sound a lot to me like just a bribe, and that redevelopment deals should involve some type of infrastructure, so the city's investment is in the ground, it's in pipes, it's in roads, it's in electricity or fiber optics or something. And so, you know, I struggle with it a little bit, that it comes back and it's not an infrastructure investment, it's a move investment or just a kind of a cash payout on it. But I guess I can reconcile this one because there will be six million dollars of added investment, and a lot of that would be infrastructure that the recipients have pledged to put in, and they are creating a very positive externality of destination for that trucking center. And since it is an extension of what they already have there, adding to their existing presence, it kind of smells like infrastructure investment to me. And so I'm just going to pretend that this one hundred and twenty-five thousand is going into the sidewalk and the building on it to get past my philosophical difference, you know, with this, but, you know, just wanted to, you know, think this is a, this way that this is a good thing and just talk out loud to you with you on some of my thoughts with, you know, how we do investment as a city, so.
Mr. Chairman, may I make a clarification, too?
Certainly.
Just so anybody watching or listening doesn't get confused, I did misspeak. It's not a hundred and fifty thousand incentive, it is a hundred and twenty-five, which you were kind not to point out to me, but, so that's seventy-five in the first year and fifty thousand in the next year.
Thank you.
And they're conditional with getting a building permit and with having occupancy permit. And so, again, that also, it lends itself more to an infrastructure thing as opposed to, you know, just a payout.
Throwing money and hoping it works out.
Right.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote on resolution twelve twenty. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Sounds unanimous. Resolution twelve twenty-one.
Thank you, sir. So this resolution would allow us to extend an agreement with Pennant Powers, Bryan and Haynes for professional public relations services that they have provided for us now for two years. We're recommending that we do this for a third year in conjunction with the communication, branding, PR services, as I mentioned, for the Fairborn Station effort.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion or a motion?
I'll move for approval of twelve twenty-one.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote on resolution twelve twenty-one. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mr. Chair, before you adjourn, I just point a clarification for the scouts. We wear a few hats up here. Obviously, as the mayor, we had the city council meeting moments ago. What you just witnessed was the periodic redevelopment agency meeting, which we have as a city, to handle things on the redevelopment side and separate funding sources and uses. And you'll see other brief meetings here shortly with our housing authority and our municipal building authority that we have from time to time, all of which should be brief meetings as well. But just so in case you're wondering why different people are conducting, it's because we wear different hats up here sometimes. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further business, we'll adjourn the redevelopment agency.
Okay, we'll call to order the West Valley City Housing Authority, and note that all members are present and that we've had an opening ceremony. Item four on our agenda is the approval of the November sixth, two thousand and twelve regular meeting minutes.
I would move for approval of the minutes of November sixth, two thousand and twelve.
Second.
Okay, a motion to approve the November sixth regular meeting minutes. Alls in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any communications or report tonight?
No, sir, thank you.
Okay, then seeing no other business or motions before this body, we'll stand adjourned.
Is it me? Am I the building authority? We hardly ever meet.
The street scouts all four in one night.
Like the paper used to say. But we'll call to order the building authority. Note that all members are present, we've had an opening ceremony, we have one item of business, which is the review and possible approval of the minutes of June, is that a five?
Fifth.
Fifth, two thousand and twelve.
Mr. Chair, I'll move for approval of the June fifth minutes.
Second.
I have a motion to second. Any discussion? If not, those in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
They have passed. Mr. Pyle, no further business.
No, sir.
And this meeting is adjourned.